Public forum to order at 6:45 on Tuesday evening. First speaker tonight is Thomas Yates. Everybody will get five minutes tonight. No, not for a public forum.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Thomas Yates, 30 Avery Street, Stratford, Connecticut. I want to talk about WPCA. The June 22, 2011 meeting of the Trumbull Sewer Commission minutes, Commissioner Hamford talks about Stratford WPCA reply about connecting all of Nichols South Sewer Project to Stratford Sewage System. Stratford wanted a connection fee of $3,500 per household, roughly 150 homes. If Trumbull connected to Stratford, Stratford would have received over half a million dollars. The Trumbull Commission tabled it for future talks. July of this year, Trumbull's first selectman, Tim Herbst, put out on the town of Trumbull's website that he has been having ongoing negotiations with Stratford's mayor, John Harkins, about connecting Trumbull with Stratford Sewage System. Whether the plant is sold or not, he wants Trumbull to join. Also, the apartments that were built at Keating Ford, roughly 160 units, had a connection fee of $3,500 per unit. That's over half a million dollars. I was talking with the developers' frontman from Stratford, and he told me in his very room two years ago, they paid a lot of money to tie into Stratford sewers. Okay, now Avalon, Cut Spring Road, there's roughly 140 units there, times 3,500 per unit, that's over half a million dollars in connection fees. These two projects total over $1 million in connection fees. Where did the money go? Since Harkins became mayor, no revenue online item of the WPCA line item 38938-4080, WPCA connection fees, from 2008 to 2015, zero. No money on this line for connection fees. Okay? Now, where did the money go for that? I was, I, 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 I got an idea. I think it's in the Town's General Fund or the Reserve Fund, and if it's there, that's illegal. That money should have went right to WPCA. If the money went somewhere else, who authorized this? And put it out in print so everybody in Stratford could see where the money went from these two projects. Okay? Now, if the plant is sold, and Trumbull, let's say next year Trumbull joins, any money that Trumbull would have paid Stratford would go to New Haven because they now own the plant. Okay? Now, everybody's been getting letters and bills about senior apartments and stuff like that. In 2008, there were 18,795 homes that were being billed for, on the sewage system. In 2009, 18,854, it's 59 more units. In 2010, 18,840, went down by 14. In '11, it went 18,889, went up 49. In 2012, 18,867. Same thing in 2013, 18,867. In '14, 18,870. In '15, 18,870. And for the budget of 2016, 18,870. Something's wrong with this. There should be more units that are being billed. Apartments are supposed to be built just like a single, or excuse me, a single-family home, two-family, or three-family home, like in the Heights or anywhere else in this town. Now, you people want more money from the two-family, three-family, maybe these units are not even paying any bills. You know, this should be all investigated, put out in print that they actually paying to the sewer fees. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Before we call the next person? Given that there's only a couple of us here right now, do you know if there's a reason why, or is there another function going on that we've missed, most of our council member? Do we want to give them a couple of minutes?
The only ones I know of are, Mr. Cubby called me, he had to work tonight. Mr. Massey has to work, and Mr. Forrester, I think is going to be late because of his job. Those are the only ones that notified me so far.
And nobody else is in the office?
What's that?
Nobody else is in the office?
Ken Poisson called Carol, said he'll be late.
He'll be late?
Yeah.
This is disappointing. Very, very disappointing. Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Brown. Everybody state their name and address, please, when they come up to the podium. Richard Brown? Nope. Next is Virgil Watson.
I'm Virgil Watson from 135 Plymouth Street. I'm here today to talk in favor of the Wilcoxens' proposed ice rink. This is an idea that the Wilcoxen Fathers Club came about a couple of years ago, and we're trying to get the support of the town to put it in. I believe it's on the agenda for tonight. I just wanted to say a couple of words about it. I think it's a great idea as a father in the neighborhood. You know, we all gather at Longbrook when the ice freezes, and a surface that won't possibly melt and have children fall through would probably be safer. But it also frees faster and be there more permanently, and be a gathering point for all the people in the neighborhood to come together and just enjoy our neighborhood and our neighbors a little more. The proposed arena is a 50 feet by 100-foot rink. It consists of a liner and short boards that would surround it. You can probably see similar ones, I know, in surrounding areas, generally with bigger lots, you see them in people's backyards. But we've had a few conversations, I know there were a couple of questions that were brought up. There's a, I think, I don't know if you've received, you've received the handouts for it. The questions that were asked by, let me get the name right, by John Merriam of the Longbrook Park Commission, they're answered in that handout. But I just wanted to personally come here, you know, there's a, there's a group of us, we're trying to work to enhance our neighborhood and get things for our kids in the parks in the winter, and an ice rink's a great, great thing to have. I think it would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. I know people are concerned that it might, you know, draw too much business to the downtown if we have more people coming to enjoy the outdoors. They're going to be spending money in our, in our shops and stuff, and I'm concerned about that, too, but I'm sure the, you know, the sports replay, maybe they can stock up on extra skates so they can have enough so that they don't run out. I know when it gets cold, they run out of pucks and stuff like that pretty quick, but I'm sure Dunkin' Donuts can buy more coffee and stuff to deal with the onslaught. But I give it my full support. I know my family supports it. They couldn't be here tonight. I know there's a curriculum council meeting that conflicts with this meeting, and there's other events. There's other Fathers, King Bosma's at hockey, practice with his kids, and there's other sporting events that are going on that conflict with this. But I, I'm speaking on behalf of a number of families in the, you know, the Longbrook Park area that are really strong supporters of this, so we'd appreciate your help in making this a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr., I have a question, just a question real quick before you leave. I got the handout, I'm just reading through it quickly.
Yep.
Is there any costs that need to be borne by the town?
The Wilcoxen Fathers Club has, I think, several thousand dollars to pay for the purchasing of the materials, and it's a volunteer organization, so we would be volunteering to do a lot of the maintenance work and the general upkeep. I think the, the question of the, the operat, so that, I think for the purchase and stuff, no. There's questions about the operating hours. I believe those would be handled the way, maybe you would check out the courts, basketball courts, or, you know, the tennis courts or whatever. It would be maybe on a small fee basis for the, the maintenance of it, and maybe a fee associated with using the lights. But there would be no major...
Would the organization be able to handle the liability, or is that something you're going to ask the town to see if they could?
No, yeah, the, the organization doesn't want to hold the liability for it. It would, it would be with the town. I think probably the attorney could probably answer that a little better, how that, that's generally handled.
And there's no cost for people to use this?
No, it would be available to anyone to use. We would, we would like for it to be available, like, as I said, on a sign-out basis, so, you know, our organization would probably want to have a, a day on a weekend where, you know, for a few hours, the families from Wilcoxen could come as a fundraiser to, you know, sell hot chocolate and have a, you know, to raise some funds and get everybody together, and I'm sure other organizations, I know there's, you know, the St. James Fathers Club or whoever, would probably want to do something similar where it'd be a place to just gather, like our parks, you know, you can go there and have an event, sign it out with the town. That's the nature of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Wali Kadim.
My name is Wali Kadim, 196 Lock and Co., Stratford, Connecticut. First of all, it's good to see everyone who decided to come out tonight. I think it has a lot to do with what's really going on in the town. I don't know if they're ashamed to show their face or what, but it's really sad when you represent a district and don't come out and hear the people speak on the different things that, that actually affects the town. So, that's not a good look at all, at all. Because if you love the town, whether you're going out of your seat or not, you want to be here, and you guys showing us that you do love the town, so I'm happy to see you guys came out. With that being said, I'm just going to get straight to it. WPCA. I mean, there's so many things to be said back and forth about it, but the deal is no good. And no matter how many times you paint the picture, we should regionalize, we should do, it's no good. Just, just, don't do it. Just keep our plan, save our own money, because you cannot tell me all these years we've been paying the taxes on the sewer treatment, and it keeps going up and up and up, that that money is not there to fix the roads. You can't give me the excuse, "Oh, we need to do the roads, we need to change the pipes in the road, we need to dig up the road and change all the pipe." Don't make no excuse. There's no excuse, there's no reason to sell that plan. Perfectly good plan. So there's no reason to sell it, just like a lot of things we sell in this town that we regret later. Don't regret this later, because it's going to have a long impact, a long-lasting impact, my children, perhaps even my children's children. So that whole sign, I mean, I see so many signs, yes, no, yes, no, it's just a gimmick. No, that's the answer. Do not sell the WPCA. Do not sell the plan. Period. We have a very good one, don't sell it. I'll say it again, don't sell it. Moving right along. Shakespeare Theater, I've been here 17 years, and 17 years you guys have been sitting on the theater. Listen, it's already there. If you can build these other buildings going up just as fast, and they last, and they work, that building's already there. Just finish it up and let a private entity run it. The town don't have to do anything. I'm quite sure there's so many people who love the arts that will volunteer their time to run that place. Let's stop making all these excuses year after year about why we can't fix the Shakespeare Theater. And I have to say this, because if you look at the breakdown of how the town is structured economically, there's so many salaries that you, now, we're in a deficit, but how do you justify keep getting a raise and a raise and a, how is that possible? How do people keep getting raises when we're supposed to be in a deficit? And then you have a, you have a situation where we have a $5.1 million gap to fill. That's very bad management. I don't really know all the ins and outs, but I can read, and I see what I've been seeing. There's places you can make cuts. I even spoke with my councilwoman, Stephanie Phillips, she's very intelligent, I love her to death. She even pointed out so many ways we can cut things that we really don't need that can cover that deficit inside of two years. And I'm quite sure if she looked deep, because she's very wise in that matter, she can find more. But when you just purposely pay tons and tons of lawyer fees fighting these cases that you could have just settled, you're killing us. You're killing us. How much money do you have to throw away that ain't yours? Not speaking to you guys personally, but we know Ted Honcho makes the main decision. But I'm saying that to say this, we have to tighten up. We, we have a town attorney, but yet we're using other town attorneys, I mean, I mean, other lawyers, over and over and over again, these astronomical fees. These things you have to grab a hold of and get them fixed. I mean, you can't just say yes to everything you get in the sheet from, from the packet that you get as a councilperson. You can't just say, "Hey, yeah, yes, yes, yes." No! Investigate. Say no if it ain't justified. Because if it keeps falling onto the town, onto the taxpayers, we won't have, we won't have a town. Because everyone's going to leave, just like they all leaving now. I know there's another conversation going on. Y'all want to come up here and speak? Y'all can come up here. Then you have, look, look at the mismanagement. The mismanagement thing, it has to get fixed. You can't keep hiring people and then hiring and hiring for the same job. You have like, how many people you need as an assistant? How many salaries we have to pay? And then you have what's going on, like presently, in the South End, right? Access Road, Stephanie set up a meeting about that, that plot of land that was earmarked for, to be a park, and it's been a park, and it says supposed to be forever, perpetuity, however you say it. And, and the people keep coming after that property. The property's off the books. Leave it alone. Let people have the buffer between their home and business. You can't have all of this, this corporate, corporate business going on to where you have no peace of mind where you live at. It, that's the buffer. Let's keep the buffer. So I know you're going to, your guys are not going to be there. God willing, those people are running, can replace the seats, and maybe have to deal with this situation going forward. I pray that God allow me to be one of those people on November 3rd. Wali Kadim, I'll be running in the 3rd District. So I'm saying that to say this, we have to allow the quality of life to resonate, because that's the joy of living in the town. I know we've got five minutes, I respect that. Just give me just less than one minute. We have to keep in our minds the quality of life versus living in a city and living in a town. I'm from New York City originally. I don't want to live there anymore. This is a town. Let's keep it a town. Thank you for your time. God bless you. Take care.
I don't even know what to say. Tell you walked in, Mr. Connor. I was, you know, it was, it was basically the three people that voted against the sewer bill. You know, and, but if anybody was going to walk in from the other side, I'm glad it was you, because I have no bones to pick with you. Because, because in another, in another 60 days, you won't be sitting there. Oh, oh, yes, here's the object of my, 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 my scorn. So I'll get on with what I was going to speak about.
Sorry I'm late, I work two jobs.
Yeah, we all do.
Sure, sure you do.
Yes, I do. This is one of them. My father used to say, he used to, he used to say, "If it looks like a skunk, it walks like a skunk, and it smells like a skunk, well, it must be a skunk." And I tell you, this deal for this, to sell this water treatment plant smells worse than a skunk. And the campaign that's been going on to, to try and justify it, yeah, I'll walk out, to try and justify it is like lipstick, is like lipstick on a pig. That's what this campaign is. And if Mr. Poisson would stand here and listen and take, and, you know, take the heat for once in a while, maybe he'd learn something. But basically, you know, the, the campaign has really been probably the worst aspect of this, because it's brought out some of the worst activity and worst actions of people. You know, I mean, ends don't justify the means. Using kids that you coach to distribute flyers illegally in mailboxes is not what I call good, good manners. And that's what's been going on. You know, lots of money's been spent to defend this terrible deal. Over half a million dollar of taxpayers' money went into negotiating this deal and then defending it, and $30,000 was spent by us to try and have our, have our day and have this referendum go through. So why are we doing this? Why is this whole thing happening? It's because this town council would not do its job in terms of the budget. This has basically been fiscal irresponsibility for six years. I've only really been paying attention for three. But I do know how to read a budget, and if I just look at the last three years' budget, I could easily find $10 million of spending that's nice to have. Well, we don't live in times since 2009 where we can afford nice-to-have expenditures like nice luxury SUVs, the types of raises people have. There's, there's just a lot of things going on in terms of spending here at Town Hall that's just nice to have. And the fact that this council rubber-stamped that really is, you know, it's the reason, it's the reason why I'm involved in the campaign, it's the reason why for the next three weeks, I'm going to make sure that everybody who doesn't support this deal gets elected, and we'll have a new bunch of faces in here, and fiscal responsibility will be restored. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Barnish. I live, I wish I knew what that was. 65 Long Branch Avenue here in Stratford, and I am here to speak about the WPCA. I would like to start out by reading, in case anybody has missed it, including some of the audience that I know is in favor of the sale. I would like to read this information from an organization called Arcadis. It was information, it was an investigation made by the New Haven general, the, whatever you call it, the region, the WPCA, I can't make this thing work. Okay. Okay. The yes vote says 189 miles of aging pipes in the plant and the pumping stations will require upgrade, and it will cost millions and millions. This is what the yes people are saying. Now, the fact is, this is the group that New Haven hired to do an investigation on Stratford. The fact is, it is in very good condition, having been upgraded less than 10 years ago. The plant performs extremely well, and the town has benefited from significant nitrogen credits as a result of superior nitrogen removal. Significant capital expenditures are not expected to be necessary at the WPCF, which is what they're calling us, for a number of years. So the people, some of them who are on this council, who are going around saying, "We need to join New Haven because we need their, their help to buy, to get discounts in buying all the things that we need for our upgrades." We're not going to need it for a very long time. And for those of you who have not been following, there is also a suit that has been filed by certain citizens of New Haven against the New Haven, greater New Haven region of plant. What they're, what they're alleging is that there is constant storm runoff into Long Island Sound, wastewater into Long Island Sound for New Haven. We have never once in Stratford been guilty of that. Never once in all these years have we ever been guilty of that. And the other thing is that they can't even handle the volume they have, and there's expected to be more. Since the beginning of the 20th century, they have been warned about upgrading their own facilities and their own infrastructure, none of which they have ever done. Now, I spoke to a lawyer who used to be a town attorney, and I asked him how this lawsuit with the people of New Haven against New Haven could possibly affect Stratford. I mean, we haven't even joined them yet, but shouldn't we join them? How would it affect Stratford? And what he said is, whether New Haven wins or loses, there will be court costs, there will be attorney's fees, there will be all kinds of legal fees. And those fees, by general accounting practices, will go into the general budget. That means that if Stratford joins New Haven, whatever legal costs there are for this suit that has already been filed, already been filed, we will have to pay a portion of those legal fees. Now, we in Stratford have already been suckered by Mayor Harkins into paying fees for him to sue us in the hopes that we wouldn't, couldn't get a referendum, which was also silly, but that was hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, if we get suckered into the legal fees for New Haven, it's going to be a great deal more than that. I would hope that we would not be responsible for the fines if they lose. I would hope we would not be responsible for that. But it just doesn't make any sense to me that we would join a group that's already in so much trouble that we can only end up with more costs than we have. Now, I'm sorry that Mr. Santi isn't here, because I had a couple of conversations with him about this and about the workers at the plant. And what he said to me was very disparaging of them. He said, "These people are not certified, they're not qualified, they know what they're doing, the management is terrible." Well, how can it all be so bad if we're among the top in the state? Doesn't make any sense. And how could New Haven have people who are going to teach us when they're among the worst in the state? It doesn't make any sense. And I have had so many homeowners, one even just last week, tell me what a great job that the WPCA here has done, the people have done, that his property, which could be in great distress, could have been after Irene, could have been after Sandy, could have been after any big storm, and he said, "Those people did all the right things, even came out to help and saved his property after each storm." And he is not the first homeowner in Stratford I've heard say that. Now, are the people from New Haven going to come down and do that for the people in Stratford? I don't know. Why would they? They're not doing it for their own town of New Haven. Why would they come down and do it for Stratford? And are they going to come here? You bet. You check, and there are already a list of people in New Haven listing their names to come down here to take the place of the people in Stratford. So, you know, we can always sell the plant next year to somebody maybe more reasonable, somebody in better shape. The first gentleman mentioned some connections we already have with Trumbull. So I ask you, please, not to rush into selling to somebody that we can't get it back from and that is going to cause us more money and more trouble. Thank you.
Tina Manis.
Tina Marie Manis, 315 Foxville Road, Stratford, Connecticut. I want to come here tonight to thank John Harkins for the Our Lady of Grace sidewalks that were announced in the handicapped spaces. I don't know if any of you had any hand in that, but that was really nice. It's amazing what happens in October, isn't it? I'm here today to express a serious concern that I have as a resident and friend. It's no secret I'm running for council. I'm blessed to have received endorsements from the Stratford Democratic Town Committee, the American Federation of Teachers, the Concerned Citizens Action Group, and just yesterday, from the For Stratford Network. As I walk through my neighborhood, I'm deeply grieved and concerned because I have heard the same report over and over again from residents. A man came to my door. He said the workers at the plant aren't qualified for their jobs, they make over $100,000 each, and they do nothing but sit around all day and talk to each other. My friend works at that plant. He lives in District 10. You know who he is. He's your friend's son. They're no loafers, none of them. They're laborers. I know this because my sister's boyfriend in high school worked there, too. Her, his father, Kevin Moran and his son were there in every storm, and they were the ones waiting in the tanks when they needed repair. They kept us safe through literally waiting in sewage. I'm grateful to them, and I'm grateful to all our public workers, and all of our cops and teachers, and all the people who keep us safe. I remember a time when in District 10, or it was 9 then, they wanted to close our firehouse, and we fought against that. I was a little kid. You don't cut workers and you don't abuse them. I'm appalled someone would say something like that about my brothers and sisters in the labor force. Just last week, I interviewed with Ask Me. They heard Stratford, they lowered their heads and shook them. This is not a town that loves labor. This is not a town that celebrates dedication to anything except the almighty dollar and how you can make a quick buck off your neighbor. I'm upset. I want to know who's going to address these lies, make them stop, and when. We can do better.
Stephen Reguskis, I live at 96 Sutton Avenue. I just wanted to talk about trying to keep a focus on what the real issues in this town are. There've been a couple of comments made during the response to public forum that seem to be aimed towards me. There are different anonymous cowards online that have made comments. I'm somebody who, I've got financial difficulties, serious financial problems. I'm not alone in that. In this town, there, everybody's living day to day. They're, they're struggling, they're trying to do the best that they can. And that's what I did for years. I, I was able to make ends meet, and then things get worse, and they fall apart, and the ends don't meet anymore. That doesn't mean that I'm somebody that should be unable to talk. I mean, do you have to buy freedom of speech now? That's, that's absurd. I think things are put out there to try to humiliate me into being quiet. That's not going to happen. I believe in what I believe in, and I've got a right to get up and speak, and I will. We've got to stay focused. Each one of you has people in your district that, they sit down with their bills, and they sit down with their checking account, and they're saying, "How, how do I do this?" And some of them have that sickening feeling when a tax bill comes and there's just no way to do anything about it. It's a horrible feeling. I, I hope none of you ever have to experience it. And it's certainly not anything to be a source of amusement for any of you or to use, be used for political gain. Councilman Poisson, last month, you said that somebody got up and spoke about you folks not knowing anything about paying taxes. I didn't hear anyone say that, nobody that I spoke to heard anyone say that, but you said you heard that comment and that one of the speakers didn't pay their taxes. That's me that you're talking about. I think that your comment says more about you than it does about me. And I hope that we'll have 10 more people, 10 new people up there. Thank you.
Walter Remkunis.
The law gets longer the older you get. Walter P. Remkunis, 425 Second Avenue. Seven months I haven't had a representative here at this town meeting. I wonder why they didn't come down and get somebody else to take his place. He was, hasn't been here, can't control anything. It should have according to this damn thing. Why don't you people get some good electronics here before you go? Okay. According to the council book, he should have been out and somebody else should have been elected in his place. So much for that. We got a new one coming in, in November. I wonder if you could steer me, who can steer me straight? Who do I have to see to get a couple grants in this town? Everybody's getting grants. I'd like to get a couple. I want to build a shopping mall with a high-class, real high-class restaurant up at Booth Memorial. Ideal place, look out, look over the river. Number two, I'd like to build a 200-room hotel in the Roosevelt Forest. Beautiful. Trails through it. I didn't touch it. But anyway, I'd like to put a hotel up there. People walk through everything that's going on. And it's illegal, it's legal according to our town attorney if it's going to bring money to the town of Stratford to make up for the, for our ex-CEO. The boys in the back room went down and fixed the town for the past couple of years. You can't blame the mayor. All he is, like on the front of a ship, a figurehead, that's all. The boys in the back room control it. I don't believe that the granting of this grant to the Stratford Stage Group, how in heck did they get a grant when they don't even have a signed paper from the town of Stratford? How in heck is that done? They're not even in the, in the property yet. They're not there and they're getting a grant to spend money? Just like they're spending, they got the monies, all the other monies that come in on that Beer Fest and stuff? They get control of that through the Arts Commission? That's not right. It don't seem right. This is our, the people's land that you want to commercialize with that 120-room hotel? The high-class restaurant you want to add on to the Shakespeare Theater? You're not even fixing the theater and you're adding on a high-class restaurant according to the pictures I was giving a couple of weeks ago. How did that happen? I think we got to have somebody else look at it and other than the town attorney group. This, well, this town attorney and his two assistants, what are they doing? Every time I turn around at one of the other meetings, I see some other, a lawyer from some firm here representing the town. We got three people supposedly, supposedly being paid by the town. You people voted it in at that time. And yet, we're paying all these extra people and it don't, it don't come cheap. I'll conclude. You people, I'm putting you to sleep. I'll give you one thing that a friend of mine made several years ago. Mike Hendricks said, "Only, you only got two more meetings, then you don't have to listen to this crap from us people in the public." Thank you.
George Mulligan, 429 Pousatonic Avenue, Stratford. I'd like to invite anybody and everybody to go to my website, www-dash, I'm sorry, www-transmute, T-R-A-N-S-M-U-T-E-gigo, G-I-G-O dot com. Transmute means to change form, body, or substance. Gigo is garbage in, garbage out. I, I've mentioned in the past about Mark Dumas and his FOI ruling and the desire for transparency. I'm going to now give you some reasons why I've asked Stephanie and Matt and others to help provide the FOI request. The FOI request, which somehow went from our town attorney to Bertram Moses and Devlin, why are simple FOI requests, which I've gotten freely in the past, being given to Bertram Moses and Devlin? I don't know. That's got to cost money. Instead of supplying information, I have to go to Hartford for hearings. The lawyer's fees in 2007, 2011, just for the town attorney, just for the town attorney, only five years. Bertram Moses and Devlin got $2.6 million and Bishop Kelly and Jackson got $1.6 million. That's $300,000 and $500,000 a year for town attorneys. The $300,000 just for Bishop Kelly and Jackson is more than the entire town attorney budget or fees that were paid from 1996 to 1998 each year. Why? Basically because they controlled the town charter revisions and it was done for them and it was done for the political parties. That information's going to be on my website about that. I have on the website, and I've, I've done FOI for all the information for those years, but they don't seem to want to present it. I don't know why. On my website, I have the top 35 of 643 defined benefit pensioners effective March. They're collecting $20.89 million off the budget. This is added to the $27.8 million on the budget on the website that goes to pay for the defined benefit pension bonds of 1998 and 2013. That's $48 million for pensions. No wonder you've got a, a pension, a budget gap. Your entire budget's under $210 million and between the on-budget and off-budget, you've got $48 million going to 644 people. And you're going to have to rebond anyway. Tommy Yates made some points about 140 condos at Avalon, 150 at Keating and other points. Well, I've got on the website, on the website, on my website, from the town website, $3.5 million the town has as expenses without invoices. Go to my website and find $3.5 million that the town can't prove exist. They just made them up. Can, can I do that with the IRS or Connecticut Revenue Services? My FOI request, how much money comes from businesses and how much from residents on collected taxes? Another FOI is, is that questions about finder's fees. And there's a whole litany of finder's fees that go to lawyers and financial people who are prominent in the Democratic and Republican town committees. Now, and these are into the millions of dollars because these are 3%, 4%, and 5% of $162 million bonded, all the different bonds, all, well, you see it on the website, transmute-stratford, The raises, the benefits, the ethics, how do we have, Richard Petula's law firm has the contract or had the contract for the Board of Education. How did his, how does his wife run for Board of Education? I feel like Cecilia in the old Simon and Garfunkel song, "No sooner had I gotten up, than my seat next to my orange Gatorade was taken." I don't know. I've raised issues about debates. All these people want to have change, but you all, everybody in this audience, fears having me in a debate because you know why? The truth would set you free and you're afraid it would send you to jail. Debate me. Let's work together. Let's find the problems, identify the problems, find solutions and make it work. Instead of not caring about your fellow human beings and only caring about your political parties and your egos and your wallets, why don't you actually have some self-respect? All of you, everybody in this room, have some self-respect and have debates. And I'll make one last point. Or Stratford by inference indicates that I'm against good government because I don't have their seal of approval. I don't want anybody's seal of approval. I don't want anybody's money for politics. All I want is your vote. Get me on the town council and let me work. Thank you.
That concludes the public forum. We will start the council meeting at 8 o'clock. I'd like to call the council meeting of October 13th to order at 8 o'clock on Tuesday evening. I'd like to have invocation by Brian Dempsey.
We pray, O Lord, for all those in our community who are responsible for our civic welfare, health, and security. May we only have a care for what will promote good government. Help us, each one, to do well the work we have to do for the good of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off, need a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th meeting.
So moved.
By Mr. Forrester, seconded by Mr. Dempsey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No ceremonial presentations, council members' response to comments from public forum. Start with Mr. Catalano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I only have one thing. I have a constituent who we all know and love, Mr. George over there, has filed numerous FOI requests with the town and I have to question why those haven't been filled in an expeditious manner and why it takes outside counsel to handle those. So, I don't know if that's a, I think that's something that we ought to do a little better at. I can't believe we're spending lawyer money to handle FOI requests that should be handled in-house and obviously with information that should be readily available to anyone who asks for it. So, I would like to see those items expedited and I'd like to think we're not going to waste lawyer money keeping George from getting his information. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo the same thoughts that Mr. Catalano had about the FOI requests. We've already been cited for training, which we'll talk about later, but I agree without repeating that we should be more responsive. It's ridiculous that someone had to wait that many months, but we'll follow through on it and try to get that resolved. I want to thank everyone who came out. Couple of people I do want to respond to. One of the first things is Mr. Roguskas. He mentioned that he felt that some comments were made that referenced people who owe taxes could not or should not be allowed to be a speaker at the public forums. That's unheard of. In fact, it doesn't matter whether you owe taxes, pay taxes, as long as you're a resident of this town. Everyone should be feel welcome to come and speak at the open forum. Everyone should feel that they can be heard. So, I apologize. I feel sorry that that is the case, but hopefully as we move forward, that will improve. Couple of things that came forward. Tina Manis, Ms. Manis, had talked about the quality of the, and I think also Peggy Barnish, both. We're speaking specifically to the quality and the operational success of our WPCAs. I agree. In fact, I did quite a bit of research. We have an exceptional facility. We have very few violations. In fact, we have a stunning performance compared to our other facilities. It is disappointing now, even as more information is coming out, that there's a lawsuit against the Greater New Haven Water PCA that basically says they're not doing their job, that they are not making the investments that they're supposed to, they're not following the EPA rules that they're supposed to, and they're making no information, no efforts to correct it. And this is an ongoing lawsuit. It was already an EPA decree and now private action had to be taken to make Greater New Haven and New Haven do their jobs. What that means to me is that it makes no sense. The arguments that they do a better job than we do are false. They don't. Very simple. They're the Titanic, they're sinking, and we don't want to jump on board. Very simple. I'm very proud of our people who work at the WPCAs. I've got lots of stories where they have protected the town, hours that they have devoted, selflessness that they have given. I'm very proud of them. And they are one of the most educated, finely trained staff, to the point that even Greater New Haven did say to me directly, "We wish we had your guys." So, thank you both for bringing that forward. Bruce made, started to make a comment on something that I'm later on, and I don't have time now to elaborate. We can dig our way out of this mess. It's a mess. It's an unfortunate mess, one that the public did not create. But there is another alternative. We can tighten our belt, we can trim the fat out of our budget. I know I found $2.9 million. It's not going to happen all in one year. You know, a lot of people say, "You're not going to find $10 million in one year." No, you're not. But it's going to have to be a concerted plan that everybody buys into over the next couple of years as we rebuild our fund balance and we get ourselves back on track. And we can do this without laying off people, touching the, we don't have to raise taxes, we don't have to hit the schools. We can do it if we put our minds and work together. And that's what it needs to happen. So, I thank you, Mr. Bruce, for bringing that forward. Outside of that, the last thing I want to do, my little self-promotion of the Pumpkin Festival is coming up this Saturday at Booth Park and I invite everyone to participate. And in particular, we have some new attractions. We have a falconer that's going to be there. We have some animal shows and interactive that we're hoping that the kids will enjoy. And we also have a pie baking and a scarecrow making contest that I am really trying to get people out there to be, participate in with prizes. We actually, you know, it doesn't cost you anything and we have prizes. So, please pass the word around. We're pretty excited about it. We usually get around 4,000 people. It's a great day and you can do this. We have lots of free events. You don't have to have money, but everything that we do have is pretty low cost and it's for the kids. That's it. Just really old-fashioned for the kids. So, thank you. So thank you.
Mr. Santhe, this is comments to the public forum.
I have no comments at this time, Mr. Chairman. I had a prior engagement, that's why I'm late.
Mr. Dempsey?
No comments.
Mr. Poisson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As several council members have said in the four years that I've been here, I think people lose sight of the fact that all 10 of us are volunteers up here. I was late coming to the public forum tonight and people were very rude and jeered my arrival. I do work two jobs, I have three kids, and I haven't seen any of them today. And by the time this meeting is over, they're all going to be asleep. So I think people need to remember that we volunteer our time and we make the best decisions that we can. I know that in the four years that I've been up here, this last tax cycle, over 60% of the homeowners in my district, their taxes went down. And that was the one thing that people always tell me, "Why are my taxes so high?" Working along with the mayor and the whole town council, we've worked hard to stabilize everything and I don't want to see everything get jeopardized by the sale of the plant not going through. Because Stephanie may have found 2.9 million dollars, but we're going to need way, way more than that. And I don't want to see all the hard work that we've done, just in my four years and everything that's been accomplished, just disappear. So I urge everybody to please vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Forrester? And the chair has nothing. Thank you. Communications bills. One thing before we start, I do have from members of the council, this was sent over to Mr. Kubik. It's about the teacher bargaining units, negotiations. If anybody wants to attend, we have, the council can have a representative at that table. So it's October 15th, 23rd, November 2nd, 12th and 19th at 5:30. So if anybody wants to be there, just let me know. Next is 4.1, partial abandonment of Sydney Street. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Barry Knott, who represents the party requesting the abandonment, is here with some maps and some information. So I think it would be probably the most efficient way to proceed is to ask him to come up to the podium and talk to you.
Yes, Mr. Knott.
Oh, the lions then.
Welcome to the well. I know you have.
That's okay. It's, it's.
Me? I used to be bitter too.
Good evening, Ms. Phillips, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street. And I'm here this evening on behalf of 27 Sydney Street, Inc. and Sydney LLC, both of which are subsidiaries of the Dock, Inc. Now, the Dock, Inc. used to own the Dock Shopping Center. It doesn't own the Dock Shopping Center anymore. Erstad Biddle Properties owns the Dock Shopping Center. However, the Dock, Inc., which previously did own the Dock Shopping Center, the Osborne family, owns the driveway into the Dock Shopping Center from East Main Street, when you go in and make a left to the Stop &amp; Shop. It still owns that. And it owns half a dozen properties on Sydney Street, which is the next street south of the entrance to the Dock Shopping Center. Now, I've handed you two maps showing the same property. The first is an assessor's map, which shows in the lower left-hand corner, Sydney Street. And I've highlighted in yellow that portion of Sydney Street, which we are asking to be abandoned. And you can see that we are not asking that all of Sydney Street be abandoned. The reason for that is that we do not own the houses at 25 and 26 Sydney Street, across from each other. Those two houses are owned by private individuals not related to my client. My client does own all the property out on East Main Street, and my client owns all of the properties directly to the east of those two houses at 25 and 26 Sydney Street. The second map is another map, a larger version of the same map showing Sydney Street, and I've highlighted in yellow all of that portion of Sydney Street, which we are asking to be abandoned. You can see from the hatch marks on this map, all of the properties that my client owns, both to the east of 25 and 28 Sydney Street and to the west of 25 and 28 Sydney Street, out on East Main Street. Now, we're not asking for that portion of Sydney Street in front of these two houses that we don't own to be abandoned, nor are we asking for that portion of Sydney Street that leads out to East Main Street to be abandoned. We are only asking for the rear portion of Sydney Street to be abandoned. Now, the plan is, there's currently vacant houses on all those lots. The plan is that those houses are going to be razed, the lot is going to be consolidated into one parcel, it is being marketed for commercial development right now, and ultimately what will happen is the entrance to that parcel will come in from the driveway to the Dock Shopping Center that currently exists, and instead of people making a left to go to the old Blockbuster building or a left to go to the Stop &amp; Shop building, they'll make a right to go into this parcel where there'll be a 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 square foot retail building. Now, as is required by Section 8-24 of the general statutes, when this first request came to this council, you referred it to the Planning Commission for their advisory opinion. The Planning Commission did meet last month. I attended that meeting and they voted unanimously to approve this abandonment request. Now, there's a new statute that goes into effect, or went into effect on October 1st. It's called Public Act 15-147, and it requires the town council to send notice to people whose property are going to be affected by the abandonment of a street. Now, there's an exception to that notice requirement set forth in that statute, and that exception is where the abandonment itself does not affect the property to whom notice should be sent, and there is still access to a major thoroughfare for the properties that abut that portion of the street that is not being abandoned. Both of those circumstances exist here. The two houses at 25 and 28 Sydney Street are not being affected by this abandonment because the street in front of those two houses is not being abandoned. Secondly, the street between those two houses and East Main Street is not being abandoned. Therefore, the second prong of the exception to that public act also applies. So I have submitted to Attorney Bishop proposed finding of facts to be made by you regarding this abandonment request in the event that you are inclined to make a favorable recommendation. And you're simply saying that the circumstances for the exception to notice that are set forth in Public Act 15-147 apply. And those conditions are that that portion of Sydney Street, which is being abandoned, does not bound the two properties not owned by 27 Sydney Street and Sydney LLC. And secondly, those two properties would not lose their sole access to East Main Street and therefore statutory notice is not required. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any questions for Mr. Knott?
Mr. Knott, what happens to the sewer line that runs through there? And right away?
The sewer line will be abandoned. The sewer line runs currently all the way down Sydney Street to the end of Sydney Street. And it services those six houses that are now vacant. That sewer line is going to be abandoned at the new terminus of Sydney Street, where the two houses that we don't own exist. So those two houses are still going to be served by town sewers, which then gravity feed out onto East Main Street. So there will be no adverse effect to those houses by virtue of the sewer.
When you demolish it, that sewer line will be capped off or whatever.
Well, yeah, we'll, our new building will eventually tie into it.
Yeah. And the last question is, with regards to that corner property, the old gas station, is that to be razed as well?
Eventually it will be. We don't have any plans for it right now. All of those properties are on the market. They are being actively marketed, but I'm not aware of any deals as yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Phillips?
The two houses that have occupants, 25 and 28, you said?
Yes.
I know that they're not required to be notified, but were they notified in any way? Do they have any idea that this is going to be abandoned?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm assuming you're abandoning the street because you want to do something else with the properties?
That's true.
Okay. Is there any plan or anything out yet as to what the thought might be, what you want to do with those properties?
Yes, it's going to be a commercial retail shopping center. Currently, this property is owned light industrial. All of the houses that are on Sydney Street right now are not permitted in a light industrial use. They're all non-conforming uses because residential use is not permitted in a light industrial zone. So what's happening here as a result of this abandonment request, the five houses that are vacant are going to be razed and those non-conforming uses are going to go away because we're going to redevelop the property with a commercial retail use. The other two houses that we don't control are going to remain non-conforming uses until something happens with them. Either we buy it or they sell it to somebody else or whatever. And the two parcels out on the street, which we do control, out on East Main Street, will ultimately be developed as commercial retail property as well. Now, under the town's plan of conservation and development, this request is consistent with all of the provisions of the town plan of conservation and development because it is recommended that this particular area of Stratford be developed in a commercial fashion.
If, when that time comes, that this plan that you may be envisioning for this property comes forward, I'm assuming it would go through zoning, all the different land use boards, and at that time, would those two houses have an opportunity to be notified and speak if they have any?
Most likely, any development of this property, depending upon the size of the structure, is going to require what's called special case approval. And special case approval is essentially site plan approval, which requires a public hearing. And as a component of that public hearing, the applicant has got to provide notice to all abutting landowners. So those property owners would get notice of any development action that we ultimately pursue.
Thank you.
It would get published in the newspaper, too.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I didn't, well, I don't have much to say about that, other than their councilmen or former councilmen might go talk to them, because I know the guy who lives in that house and might let them know what's on the plan. But I don't know, is that your district now?
That is correct.
No questions?
The, I just have, I just have a question. The 25 and 27 properties, they're both up for sale right now?
No, no. 25 and 28.
I mean, 25.
Are, as far as I know, they're not up for sale right now. 28, the one on the south side of the street, is an investment property, I think it's owned by Steve Michael's widow, as a matter of fact, Matt.
That's the 28, right?
The one with the sign, the one with the big advertising sign on it.
Yeah.
I don't know who owns the one.
The other guy that lives at the top of the street's a nice old guy.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. As far as I know, they're not on the market.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey?
Is there a chance that the town is going to have to purchase these or is this a private entity in itself?
No, this is private. What will happen is, half of the street that's being abandoned will go to the property owners on both sides.
I see.
Which happened to all be my clients. Now, I didn't just whip this up, this idea and send a letter to the town attorney. Before I did that, I met with John Casey and Kevin Morrissey in the engineering department to go over the proposed abandonment to see if they had any concerns vis-à-vis town rights of way or easements or drainage issues that they were concerned about, because I knew that if that had been the case, they would be making recommendations to you that would have been contrary to my request. So before I went off half-cocked, asking for something that John Casey was not going to agree to, I met with them. They have no problems with this proposal whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion to?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I just, I want to make sure we stake on the agenda. So you have two things actually you're going to have to do if you decide that you want to move forward with abandonment. The first is to make the finding of fact, as Attorney Knott has suggested, basically vote to approve the handout that we provided tonight. And then the next action item is to accept the report of the Planning Commission and determine to abandon the property. If that's what you're, if that's what this body's intention.
We need to make a motion to approve the motion of the Planning Commission if.
Right, I would, I would accept, if you're going to move to abandon, you would want to accept, to make the findings as set forth in the handout. I can provide another copy if you need. Somebody would have to make that motion to make those findings of fact, essentially by resolution. And then the next action item, again, if you choose to do so, would be to abandon, to accept the Planning Commission's report and vote to abandon.
All right, could I have a motion to, first?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Of the town attorney for the abandonment, right?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the finding of the facts made by the town council regarding the abandonment of a portion of Sydney Street.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second, we need a motion to accept the motion of the Planning Commission?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forrester. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Were we going to have discussion on that? Were we going to have discussion on that? Still like to see the homeowner notified, but the only thing I wanted to say about that, I was actually shocked to find that the Dock, Inc. still had an interest over there and having a long-time relationship with the people who own the Dock, Inc. and run the Dock, Inc. I think most people would agree that the Osborne family was probably one of the best corporate partners this town has seen, so I don't doubt that they would do something tasteful over there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So back to all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to make a comment regarding the regionalization plan. Councilwoman Phillips, you brought up the lawsuit, and I got to tell you, the timing of that article was not the best and it was one-sided and they didn't give a response. But they did issue a response. There's actually an article in the New Haven Register, I believe, today, and a statement from them was that the Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority denies any liability and states that it is operating its system in accordance with its lawfully issued regulatory permits and consent orders. The authority is in compliance in all material respects with consent orders issued by the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Greater New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority is also in constant communication with deep, so has to be fully informed of any and all issues. The city of New Haven's also being sued, and I believe there might be other parties to that suit also. So depending on who you talk to, you might get a different response, but lawsuits are not uncommon to authorities. But again, I just wanted to address your concern.
It's well taken. It's a mess.
No, not really. I wouldn't recommend something if I didn't think it was good for the town of Stratford. Like to move on. This evening, if you were here earlier, we had a domestic violence vigil, which is held this evening at 6:00. this evening at 6:00 P.M. Like to thank the Center for Family Justice and Deb Greenwood for having that vigil out front, promoting awareness regarding domestic violence at the home. This week, we're going to have a police awards ceremony, which will be held Thursday at 5:30 P.M. right here in the council chamber at Town Hall. Stephanie, just to dovetail on your comments earlier, the Pumpkin Festival will be this Saturday at Booth Park from 1:00 to 5:00 P.M., and I hope the weather is as beautiful as it was today, as it hopefully will be on Saturday. Special thanks for firefighters for hosting an open house at the firehouse this past Saturday. The weather was gorgeous and it was a huge success. We had a lot of, a lot of young children over there climbing in trucks and touching them and enjoying the day with our firefighters. The Stratford Lighthouse will be open for tours this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 P.M. and is being hosted by the Coast Guard. So if you're not doing it this Saturday, you can go look at the lighthouse and go to the Pumpkin Festival afterwards. The Stratford Senior Services has been selected for the 2015 Excellence in Support of Aging Organization Award by the Southwestern Agency on Aging. I'd like to congratulate Diane Petruski and her staff, and the job well done. Our first annual recognition awards for new and expanding companies will be held on October 26th at 5:00 P.M. at Joey C.'s Restaurant. The event is being sponsored by the town of Stratford, the State Department of Economic and Community Development, and the Bridgeport Regional Business Council. So join us at Joey C.'s next week, actually on the 26th. This Friday, the BRBC's Women's Leadership Council is featuring three area women at Tesco's Restaurant, which includes our very own Karen Kaiser from Economic Development Department. She's going to be in a panel with two other women that are in economic development in the city of Bridgeport and town of Trumbull. The third annual Vicky Soto 5K event will be held on Saturday, November 7th. Registration begins at 7:30 a.m. and the race starts at 10:00 a.m. If you're planning attending this event, I suggest you get there early because it is packed. It's a very successful event. It raises a lot of money. That is, it's November 7th, so come on out and join us. It's a ways off, but it's, we're not going to have another council meeting till then. And what I'm going to do tonight, just because I've had a lot of questions regarding economic development, I figured I'd give a report tonight during the mayor's report, kind of bring everyone up to speed. And they actually had a meeting tonight, a commission meeting. For grant money for redevelopment, we've been awarded, most of you probably know, but $1,205,000 from the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to remediate and abate approximately a three-point acre former public school site at 1,000 East Broadway. The town council had voted to accept the money. Next up is a phase three environmental assessment, which is very comprehensive, and RFP for contractors to abate and demo this building. Town plans to seek to be development opportunities that feature mixed-use transit-oriented development, which will revitalize Stratford Center. Transit rate into district, it's a new zoning overlay. The Stratford zoning regulations are actually in effect. In addition, the state of Connecticut Office of Policy Management has recently announced that the town of Stratford has been awarded a $200,000 transit-oriented development planning grant for a complete streets improvement plan, which will allow the town to further develop transportation choices within the roughly one-half mile radius around the train station. Proposals have been accepted for the Stratford Center Complete Streets Improvement Plan, which will be funded under the state of Connecticut OPM Transit-Oriented Development Planning Grant. We received seven proposals and the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, and the town will conduct interviews this month to select a firm to do the work. Sikorsky Airport upgrade is moving forward. Main Street has reopened, thank goodness. The project includes the realignment of approximately 2,200 linear feet of Connecticut Route 113, Main Street, to accommodate the construction of a runway safety area at the east end of Runway 6-24. All the utilities in the area of Route 113 are located underground due to the proximity of the runways, and it actually looks a lot nicer with the telephone poles not being there anymore. Department of Economic and Community Development from the state of Connecticut also gave us a grant for 2.85 million. By the way, out of that pool of money, there was $27 million. The town of Stratford actually got over 10%. We got the lion's share of that grant for the contract plating site. The Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, in addition to the grant, is used to remediate and demolish the 10-and-a-half-acre contract plating site, which lies also within the Stratford Transit-Oriented District for mixed-use slash TOD development. Connecticut Deep Commissioner Rob Clea and also the new Connecticut Deputy Commissioner Tim Sullivan came to Stratford at contract plating for a tour and its brownfield properties. And it was a very successful event. It was also reported in the Connecticut Post. Mercer Coal Tower demolition and grants. If anyone has driven on Stratford Avenue, you'll notice that the towers are finally coming down. That only took about five years. I was very excited to see that happen. Councilwoman Phillips, I know you were involved with that also, and I'd like to, I'd like to thank the entire town council for the support of that. Again, cleaning up our brownfields is very important for a number of reasons. They're tax delinquent, but also they're blighted properties that we like to see get cleaned up and be productive again. So we look forward to that, that cleanup occurring and the building being removed and going for redevelopment at that site. Stratford Avenue Streetscape Project is work, is in the works right now. It's going to include Stratford Avenue and Honey Spot Road intersection, and the reason why we're doing Streetscapes there is because with the Two Roads Brewery and other development, it's actually become a destination in town, which is a good thing. So we're looking to not only clean up the area, but also recognize the fact that it is a gateway to Stratford, and there's a lot of opportunity there in getting some of these older properties back into productive use. So we're looking forward to that Stratford Avenue Streetscape Project moving forward. I'm getting tongue-tied on that. The commercial grant list, as many of you know that we did see a drop in the grant list due to property values declining. The good news is that, you'd say, well, is there really good news? There is. Residential values went down about 119 million, but commercial properties went up 72 million dollars. And that, that's what we've been trying to do, is create more economic stimulus with commercial properties to help shift the tax burden from residential property owners to commercial property owners. And we're actually starting to see that occur, which is a good thing for everyone in town. In, in 2012, we created a redevelopment agency, which you've heard of before, which is addressing the brownfields in town. The town is also working on tax foreclosures. Prior to this push, the town collected about $350,000 in back taxes just in 2013 alone.
Excellent.
And in 2014, in 2015, the town has collected more than $2 million. Let me repeat that, $2 million in back taxes from property owners. And one of them owned about $640,000, and that was the property off of Holly Lane. Also, we did receive $24 million. We didn't receive it, but it was approved for the Exit 33 interchange. The Connecticut DOT will hold a public informational meeting in Stratford per request of Milford Mayor Ben Blake. It's a courtesy to the mayor of Milford. An economic study conducted by Connecticut DOT shows no impact to businesses in a devon section of Milford. The full interchange plans at Exit 33 on Interstate 95 are progressing. As funding for the project was unanimously approved by the Greater Bridgeport and Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, the approval by the Metropolitan Planning Organization provides the $24 million in funding for various phases of the project, with construction projected to begin in 2017, 2018. 576 600 East Broadway, this is a superfund site that it was actually foreclosed on by the town of Stratford. An RFP has gone out for developers. One, one replied, the South City was the developer and the only one that actually applied. The EPA is working on a site plan that will include redevelopment and reuse of this property, which has been delinquent and fallow for years. There is a study going on on Route 10. The Greater Bridgeport Regional Council and the town of Stratford is conducting a traffic study on Main Street and Route 10, which is funded by Connecticut DOT. The purpose will be to look at ways to ease current and future traffic flow in the area of Sikorsky Aircraft, not Sikorsky Airport, Sikorsky Aircraft and Riders Landing over by the Merritt Parkway. A number of meetings have already taken place with the technical committee and the community advisory panel. Meetings were held with Sikorsky Aircraft, Riders Landing, and other businesses. Proposed plans based on those meetings were presented to the advisory panels later this month. The, the main objective is to actually ease traffic flow in that area. If you drive through there, especially when the plant is getting out, it's very congestive, particularly on rush hour and during shift changes. The town of Stratford has worked with Stratford Companies, connecting them with the state of Connecticut's Department of Economic and Community Development to secure more than $3 million in business express grants and loans. This program has helped create more than 100 jobs for Stratford and retained more than 450. Department of Economic and Community Development, the state of Connecticut, worked with four companies on the Job Expansion Tax Credit Program to also create new jobs in Stratford, total of 18 within the last two years. A new business, the Point Stratford Redevelopment, we're still moving forward. The Army Corps of Engineers is doing an analysis of the data. They are now engaged in the process to help get an agreement between the state deep and the Department of Defense, which is the Pentagon. They're supposed to be done with their analysis in a couple of months. DCED has awarded the town $200,000 for the assessment of this brownfield property. Ross and Roberts on West Broad Street, this site has been officially listed with commercial brokers. There are a number of interested developers for the property. The current owners have completed phase one and phase two environmental assessments and will conduct cleanup, which is estimated at a half a million dollars. Holly Lane, there's a new medical building going up. It's, construction has begun for a brand-new building in front of the Big Y. Salt Lake Kitchen has moved to Stratford. They just purchased 125 Bruce Avenue, previously owned by Nova Pasta. They're also a food manufacturer. Seems like we have a little niche share with breweries and, and food manufacturers. They will bring 20 new jobs to Stratford. They purchased the property for $3 million. The Federal Express Distribution Center, Stratford Land Development, has sold its property in the Stratford Executive Park, located off of Lordship Boulevard, for over $19 million. The town receives about $50,000 in conveyance tax from that sale. The new owners of the property will build a 225,000-square-foot building, leased to Federal Express, expanding in Stratford. They have received approval for tax abatement from this town council, and FedEx will create 68 new jobs and retain 85 jobs right here in Stratford. Holly Lane Property, this is the property I mentioned earlier, the town of Stratford has paid, the town of Stratford has received $640,000 in back taxes. With a foreclosure sales date pending by the town, the taxes were paid finally. Developers in the process of purchasing the property from the current owners. They have plans for condominiums and a restaurant on the property located behind 99 Holly Lane. This is more than a 20-acre property. I believe it's approximately 30 acres. A lot of it is wetlands, which obviously can't be developed. 2009 Main Street, it's the Christ Church parking lot across from the Episcopal Church. Zoning has approved the plan for an apartment building for the property. This will include about 40 units of one and two bedrooms. Castor Moving Company has expanded in Stratford. They purchased an industrial building for 5.15 million dollars from Stratford Land Development. This purchase is to offer storage solutions to the moving company. The 87,150 square foot space is on 400 Long Beach Boulevard. Castor Moving Company has 40 employees. As far as restaurants, a lease has been signed for a new restaurant, the former Little Mo's, it's actually open now. It's an American family restaurant called Maxwell's. If you get a chance, if you haven't already, please visit them and support them. 1019 Main Street, this property has been sold. Developer has cleared the lot and plans to build a 10-unit condominium at the site. He has presented his plans, his zoning is awaiting a decision. This is the, the property across from Dulica Field.
From where?
Dulica Field.
Oh, Dulica Field.
It's, it's been, it's been on the market for a while. 1350 Barnum Avenue, it's a vacant lot by Cuttravellows, has been sold. Construction has begun. It's, it's entering its final stages. Advanced auto parts are coming there. It's a new 6,000-square-foot building over by Salerno's. Rexel, a global leader in the distribution of electrical supplies and services, has moved from Access Road to 480 Lordship Boulevard. It's the former Gamma Building. Rexel operates in 38 countries with a network of some 2,200 branches, a distribution network of more than 40 banners and employees, over 30,000 people. Rexel's sales were 13.1 billion in 2014. Councilwoman Phillips and I were at the American Institute of Health and Technology last week. This school came to Stratford in 2012 in a small facility with two instructors and eight students. Today, they moved to a new facility in town at 480 Lordship Boulevard. They now have 10 instructors that have graduated over 150 students. They had a grand opening on October 9th last week, so we welcome them into the community. Joey C.'s Restaurant, looks like we finally have a restaurant at Doc Shopping Center that has some bite. It's open here and it's over near BJ's. This is their second location. It's actually known as Joey C.'s Boathouse because it's on the water. So we welcome them here in Stratford. They've created 60 jobs at that one location just here in town. The Lazy Dog is a new restaurant opening the end of October at the former Sienna Site on Main Street, right here at Station House Square. The owner of this new restaurant is the former owner of the field, which is in Black Rock in Bridgeport. So be a family restaurant. Fitness Edge is moving to the Doc Shopping Center and taking over the Staples vacant spot. A lease has been signed. No timeline is, is on them, is, has been given to us right now, but they are working on the facility. The owners of 99 Bearsley Avenue are looking for a new tenant for the space off I-95. 7-Eleven Building on Barnum Avenue, the former 7-Eleven Building, it, it was closed for a while. I believe that 7-Eleven actually pulled the franchise from the, the owner of that store. But the good news is a new convenience store has signed a lease and has taken over the former location on Barnum Avenue. It is a 10-year lease. Popeyes Chicken, the chain is currently in court with the town of Stratford Zoning Commission for denying its application to come to Stratford at the Doc Shopping Center. They received zoning approvals from the Zoning Board of Appeals and have signed a deal with Urstadt Betel. That's pending in court. AAA, which is near and dear to some of our folks here this evening, this project is also in the courts. A decision from the courts is expected in October. AAA did plan to build a 13,000-square-foot building for offices and a garage and for its fleet on Ferry Boulevard. 60 Beach Roll, for some of you that have been here for a while, it's the old Allen's East across from Marnix. Developer has met with Economic Development and Zoning about a new potential restaurant being at that location. They're in the process of working out details with the current owner. The former roller skating rink, also next to Marnix on Washington Parkway, a developer has purchased the property and the plan is to build residential condominiums. He has not finalized his plan, but he has cleaned up the property. LA Fitness has signed a lease with Brixmore Properties over by Marshalls. They're in the process of completing that. Work has, as you see, has begun at the site. The building department has approved a permit for the fitness center, which includes a pool and basketball courts. This is at 411 Barnum Avenue cutoff, the former location of the Stratford Movie Theater. LA Fitness hopes, hopes to open by the end of this year. 1717 Barnum Avenue, it's the old budget rental, has been sold. The new owner has purchased the property next door, which is an older red house, and he wants to demolish the current building and build a new retail center during an assembly of both parcels. And that's also across from the, the Ale House establishment over on Barnum Avenue. Connecticut Distributors is expanding its business in Stratford. Construction is completed on the 50,000-square-foot addition to the building on Lordship Boulevard. Town and state officials will, will be attending a ribbon cutting next Monday, which is October 19th. CDI will be creating 17 jobs with this expansion. Just an important note, we, we found out that they needed to expand and they were actually looking outside of town to relocate the facility. We were proactive with that. We actually met with the president and had a discussion with him and were able to keep him in town and keep those jobs, so it's good that CDI stayed. Some new companies that came to Stratford, Unicare, Kirby Carpet Cleaners, Norwalk Powder Metals, Cobra Electronics, Versa Media, Norsecia, LA Barnaby, are all new businesses in Stratford in the past year, bringing with them more than 300 jobs. Forest Cities, or 1111 Stratford Avenue, their 128-unit apartment complex is leased. There's a waiting list. Avalon Bay Apartments in the north end of town, just north of Merritt Parkway, they are also currently fully leased. The Exxon Gas Station on Stratford Avenue has demolished the building to remedy contamination. Once Exxon concludes remediation of the property, they will be selling the property. There has been a lot of interest in it, and the town of Stratford knows of one who is actually a cash buyer that would like to purchase that site. The Exxon Mobil on Lordship Boulevard, the property is still available for lease. We've met with and actually traveled to New York to meet the owner, who owns Broadway Stage, which is, his name is Anthony Argento, but those of you that like Madam Secretary and Blue Bloods, he's the owner of that production studio. And he actually bought this parcel in Stratford with another parcel in Brooklyn, which he needed to expand his production studio. He's a nice guy. He, he plans on holding on to the property and is looking for a user right now. Our meeting with him went very well. It's a 19-acre site, and it has a lot of potential. We did contact Stu Leonard's about potentially moving here, but right now, they're not interested. They're expanding in Long Island right now, but maybe in a future time, we could contact them. Paradise Green Retail Space, the Allstate has opened up an office and new building at 3651 Main Street in Paradise Green. This is across from the Sitting Duck Restaurant. It's a 6,000-square-foot building, so we're glad to see that a tenant has arrived there. And, also, the state of Connecticut Department of Economic Development invited the town of Stratford on September 21st, 24th, to go to Mohegan Sun. We were one of 10 towns to do a presentation on our brownfields, and it was, the properties were contract plating and Stratford Center. But, we were honored to be there, and the fact that the state of Connecticut is giving us the time to help promote some of the properties, our brownfields in town, and to meet with developers, I think was a big feather in our cap. And, again, it's allowing us the opportunity to talk about Stratford outside of Stratford, but to give a presentation about all the opportunities we have here right in our community. And, with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm done.
You've been busy.
We have been, but I wanted to get it all out, so I figured.
I like that. No, thank you for that. And, also, do you have any appointments while you're?
None at this time, but I can't believe you want me to speak after that. But, one comment, I'd like to thank our economic development team, both Amy Nora and Karen Kaiser. They've been doing a great job, and, you know, they mitigate a lot of things that never make the paper and you never hear about, and that's the reality of it. And, the one thing I'll tell you is that we're doing a lot here in town despite the fact we're in a state that's in a region that's not competitive. And, the fact we're able to keep businesses and see businesses move here is a credit to everyone in our community.
I know I can speak for the rest of our council members, that we're happy to see this much economic development going on in town also, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, move on to committee reports. Short Beach Commission, looking for a batting cage, the Short Beach Complex. Mr. Poissons, can you speak on that?
Mr. Santi.
Oh, Mr. Santi.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the Stratford Little League came before the Short Beach Commission, which I chaired for Mr. Massey, and they have a plan to build a batting cage, which they're going to pay for and maintain. It was Chad Esposito was there. He looked over the plans and suggested we move forward with approval for the option two, which I believe was distributed to council members. So, they're going to purchase, you know, all the materials, and then they're going to build it, so.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to accept that.
Okay, so we accept the findings of the Short Beach Commission for a batting cage. Do they have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Connor. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Chair votes for it. unanimous. The second is also from the Short Beach Commission, Mr. Santi.
Yeah.
Lower the non-resident golf fees.
Yeah, there was a discussion, resident, residential rates are up for the golf course, but apparently, to keep with the more competitive thing that was discussed, we should probably lower our rates and be a little bit more competitive. You know, the Short Beach Golf Course is on the up and up, and we're investing a lot of time and money into it. So, to keep rates competitive, we recommended to the council to lower. And, I'd like to make a motion to approve, we wrote, lower non-resident golf fees for weekdays $16, and on the weekends $18.
Okay. Do they have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Catalano. Any discussion?
Question.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes, question to Mr. Santi. Was there any discussion at the Short Beach Commission about trying to look at reducing some of the cost or address the deficit that it's been running?
Well, they did, they did discuss some of the deficit issues, but, you know, the golf, because the road was closed, hurt business there, so what people are doing now, we noticed the drop-off in some of the non-residents, and, you know, to stay competitive, we want to attract those people back by lowering the fees. So, the deficit, we do subsidize a little bit out of the tax base, you know, each year, so it's not going to be an enterprise that's going to make money. It's here, if you're break even one year, it's a good thing, but it is on the up and up, and it is, the deficit is slowly going down.
So, there were no, no specific changes of reducing your expenses at all?
We didn't look at that. That's sort of come from the side of the later date.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Chair votes yes. Town Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 5.3.1 Claims Report, we don't have anything to report this month. We have a lot of things that are close to resolution, so I anticipate probably next month we'll have a claims report. 5.3.2, I can tell you that the Attorney General's Office is still in the process of circulating a proposal within the various departments of the state. They have to sign off on it before they can actually approach us with it, so I think that matter should stay on the table because they just don't have anything to provide you with tonight. 5.3.3, the next step on that process is to sit down with a contract with this body and review sort of what my best guess is, is what this body might be looking for, responses to that guess from the, from Stratford Stage Group, and then to sort of consolidate all the requirements that you give to me to put into that document, into a document. I think that's a working session that's probably a minimum of a couple of hours, and I would want a week or two lead time if I could, when I know you're going to do that, to give you a document that you can actually review, and we can come to the meeting sort of prepared to talk about. There's a lot of work there, so I would recommend it stay on the table tonight, and then if you just give me a little lead time on when that matter.
Could we have this ready for, say, two weeks from now?
Yes, it would probably take me a week from now to get you a document that's in sort of an organized enough form for it to be useful to you in deciding, you know, or formulating questions or making a determination of what elements of the document you're in favor of and which ones you're opposed to. And, if you felt like a week was enough time to read that document, then yeah, absolutely.
So, we could do a special meeting, hopefully towards the end of October?
Yeah, I will get that document in, not final form, but form for you to be able to use it. Useful form, maybe is a good way to say it, and, you know, schedule whenever you think is appropriate.
Okay.
I'll try to, I'll make that my high priority.
Mr. Chairman, on that same topic, what's the likelihood that we'll have all the information and we'll be able to come to an agreement and sign a document by, I guess, our last council meeting, which is in November or December, the new council this morning?
So, let me, if I can answer your question with information, and maybe it helps. The document that I have, that I've been working off, is the old Haney Agreement. And, then I took the proposal from SSG, and I tried to pull the things out of that that seemed to be fundamental to what they were trying to do, plug those in where appropriate in the Haney Agreement, take things out of the Haney Agreement that didn't look like they applied to that type of proposal. And, then I shared that with their attorney so that I knew if this was, if we were on the right track, because really, it's all guesswork on my part, is what you might be interested in seeing in an agreement like that, what type of deal you wanted. The, we have their comments to most of that, not all of it. I've compiled a lot of those into a document. What I haven't done is I haven't sort of done some of the extra research on other venues to see how they're treating some of those issues that are identified, and this really because I'm not sure if these are issues for you or not. So, if we had a meeting, let's say in two weeks, and we went through the entire document, and generally, you felt like the guesses I made were good guesses and were on track, and the Stratford Stage Group people were of the same mind. I see a few, I see some stumbling blocks in this deal as it is right now. I don't know, I don't know how big a stumbling block they are, whether they're for you or for them. But, assuming that those stumbling blocks are minimal, then you could really, at almost any time, decide that you want to go forward and authorize the agreement. So, it really depends on what comes out of that next working session, but it could be right away, or you may find you're really far apart.
And, that's fine. I'm not trying to speed it or slow it. Most of this has been on their delay of getting it together. I just want to make sure that we do our due diligence and don't feel pressured into something because the clock is ticking. I think the next council will do an apt job as well, whether we do it or they do it, I'm not really worked up about it either way. I just want to make sure we do a thorough due diligence. You have the time to do your research. We have the time to review it, and we're not trying to just push something through because of an election.
Okay.
That's all.
So, I guess that matter stays on the table?
We'll keep it on the table.
Okay.
All right. 179 West Ave, we have really been trying hard to get us in a position where we could say to you, here's the status of negotiations, and here's what we recommend as your next step in the negotiations. Part of that requires the current property owner to respond to, you know, information and appraisals and things we've been trying to work with the owner. We're just not, we don't have a response from the owner that I think enables us to take another step forward today, and we're pushing. I want, we really are working on this. I know it's a high priority for some of you, but I just can't move it forward at this point without the property owner also being engaged.
Mr. Santi?
Well, I'd like to take it into executive session, discuss what we're, you know, what the options, because I think we could move forward with this. I don't think it's that much off.
So, you could, I can tell you where the negotiations are, and we can talk about our strategy in those negotiations, and you could make a determination that.
Yeah. I don't think it's outrageously that far off, so.
Okay, well, if that's something you want to do, because we're talking about negotiations to acquire real property, and doing those negotiations in public could certainly affect the price you end up paying. So, I would recommend that you make a motion to take it off the table, and then, once it's off the table, someone should make a motion to take it into executive session, sort of using the language that's in, on the agenda, to include Town Attorney's Office, Attorney Bruce Jackson, who's handling that matter for us, the mayor, the mayor's chief of staff, the finance director, the chief administrative officer, the town council. I said the town attorney's office, I believe.
Yes.
I don't think I've, have I left anybody, I don't think I've left anybody out. All right?
Well, I'll make a motion to take it off the table, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to take 5.3.4 off the table. Do they have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dempsey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Nay. So.
Tough crowd tonight.
4-4. Do we have a roll call vote on that? Ms. Phillips?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye. Santi?
Aye.
Mr. Poissons?
Nay.
Nay.
And, the chairman votes aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we go into executive session?
No, no, no.
Oh, just take it off the table, I'm sorry. Now, we need a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go.
I think we need a supermajority.
I believe the mayor would have to break a tie.
Mayor voted, mayor voted gay.
And, I believe you need two-thirds of the body to vote in the affirmative to go into executive session.
We haven't got that far. We just took it off the table.
I know. Let's just take it off the table.
I don't think we get there for a couple of years.
Money's already allocated. It's coming out of the Bowell payment. This is, this is a project that is going to stall drainage. It's built, and it's going to hurt the residents.
Two months is having a great lapse, isn't it?
I don't see why we can't discuss it. We don't have to take action on it.
Tim just, Tim just, Tim told us what the update was. Why are we going to executive?
Can we pass this, and I'm going to hand the book to Attorney Florida.
Yes, we'll come back to this. Renewal of license agreement for the Red Devil Booster Club, this is something we do every year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Chair votes yes. Pass unanimously.
Why F.O. Lashley, the attorney?
What about it?
Do we have coffee in the back? He's working on it.
5.3.6 Turner Contract with Stratford. I'm going to ask Mr. Llewellyn to stop up, step up to the podium. He's the chairman of our subcommittee for Stratford High School.
Alan Llewellyn, 949 Huntington Road. Basically, what this is, is this is the authorization for the mayor to sign the contract for pre-construction services. That's in the amount of $195,000, covering a 14-month design development period.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Llewellyn? Ms. Phillips?
Not really questions. I think it's something we should approve, and I'm supporting it. I just want to be clear that unless things have changed, we are accepting the $195,000 under the town's funding and our authority until we get the final bond approval from the state. I just want to be sure about, we're all in the same agreement on that.
That's correct. And, this, this contract would be limited to just the pre-construction phase, and should Turner carry through and continue to be our construction manager, the agreement would then get amended to include the construction phase.
Right. At the same time, if we don't get the bond approved next year, we are on the hook for this as well, correct?
Correct, under the same parameters, which we talked about two months ago when we did those other two approvals.
I'm in support that we should take that risk, and that we should accept the pre-construction costs, with the caveat knowing that it'll get final approval. We expect it to get approval in the next year's legislative budget. If we don't pass this right now, it will set the whole project back a year considerably more. And, we do have the funding already approved, at least in the first phase of funding that we did two years ago.
I agree with it. Ms. Phillips? So, would you like to make a motion to, or is there any other discussion on the?
I'll make a motion to accept the request for the pre-construction funding for Turner Construction.
Okay. Do they have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dempsey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Mr. Catalano is out, so it's 7-0.
Mr. Connor's out, too.
Oh, Mr. Connor's out.
Three, four, five, six. Come on, Jim.
Mr. Connor, would you vote? We need a vote on Stratford High School.
Yay.
Yes, so 7-0.
Yay.
All right, 5.3.7 Long Brook Park Skating Rink, proposed by the Wilcox and Fathers Club. I would like to send this over to Parks and Rec Committee, and also Long Brook Park Commission to discuss and trying to iron out any details that needs to be, and hopefully we get this back by next council meeting. Does anybody have any?
Some move.
I want to take some discussion on it first.
I would like to see this go to Parks and Rec, but I'm also concerned about the timing. And, I'm fine if we want to give some preapproval, or at least a vote of support, on the conditions that I've heard so far, so that if Parks and Rec does approve it and works out the conditions of the skating rink, it can move along, and you could work directly with the Fathers Club if you so choose to do so.
Oh, I mean, there's issues, especially with the insurance and liability, Mr. Bishop, right, on this skate rink?
Yes, so there are issues on liability. We could talk about it now, or we could talk about it when it comes back from that commission, that committee, whatever.
I mean, I'd like to hear some of it now.
I'd like to say a couple of comments about that. I mean, listen, you know, the same liability occurs whether kids are playing lacrosse down there, kids are playing soccer, kids are playing softball. There should not be some new thing, right? It's athletics. You know, there's no difference between kids skating on one of our town ponds and then scouting on a rink. The one thing I do want to mention here, because it wasn't written here, is that the Long Brook Parks Commission did pass on a favorable recommendation for this project. I know it's something the Wilcox and Fathers have been working on or trying to work on for two years now, and I'd really like to see us get out of our own way and make it happen. Shouldn't be that difficult.
So, Mr. Chair, are you looking for me to just give you kind of a rough rundown on liability and?
Right, yes.
Okay, so, generally speaking, some of the other activities you talked about, let's say lacrosse, soccer, anything like that, if you're talking about the condition of a, sort of a natural condition of the land, you have much, much less liability for something that happens there than you do an activity that happens on a man-made structure. So, things like skate parks and ice skating rinks are the two that you read about all the time, because you're creating the structure, and they require a certain level of maintenance that ground doesn't require necessarily. You do have a higher exposure. It doesn't mean you don't do it, and it doesn't mean there isn't a way to manage it.
How about, how about if we put a sign that says skate at your own risk?
Sterling House might be another one, because they do a lot of things. You know, I'm trying to give you the things that you need to think about, but I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just telling you.
Just in a couple of responses on that, the YMCA initially took the responsibility for the skating park, and then they gave it up. And it came back to the town under the Recreation Apartment, and it resided there for most of the time, until it was taken down. And then, the other example is, up at Booth Park, we have a climbing wall, man-made. It's a climbing wall, and for little kids, and it's been there for some time. We don't even have signage. Not that I'm advocating somebody to go out there and break their neck, but we've had it there for many, many years, and we've accepted that. So, I don't want to create a separate condition for this, outside of what we've been doing all along. And I would like to see this move forward, and not hold this up further unless there are some other real details that need to be worked out, in terms of how the park is open, when it's closed, who's going to maintain it, things like that. But the liability issue, I understand, but I don't want to create a second tier, different than what we've been doing for other parks and other arrangements.
Okay, and you have the right to do that. I'm just telling you, you know, things that I think you need to know, but you certainly have the right to decide, you know, we'll take that liability, or we'll look into insurance, or we'll pass it off, or whatever. Yeah.
Now, the... Did you see the rest of the questions on this, Mr. Bishop? Did you get a chance to look at that?
I set it down and looked for it. Really?
And asked the rest of the council members if they had a chance to look this over. I mean, we could, if you think this is feasible, take a vote on it tonight to approve.
Sure. Well, so I can, if you want, I can share with you the comments that the Public Works Department had. That's the only party I've actually spoken with. I did get an email today, the same one I think most of you got, with some information on it. They're all appropriate for the town council to make a determination on. They're not, you know, you don't have to get Public Works' approval. You can decide to do this. Public Works is questioning lights, whether we want to install lights, and then, if we do, who pays for it. They're questioning snow removal, because the club that wants to donate the rink can't commit absolutely all the time to being able to clear this snow. They're looking for help from the town. You could decide to give them that help. It's up to you. They're looking for... Public Works is looking to understand who's responsible for maintenance of the rink. Liability, we talked about. Public Works is looking to understand who would be scheduling the events, so if somebody wanted to rent it out for a party, or some sort of athletic event, or something, they want to know who would be doing that. And they mentioned that you don't want to have the rink installed before Thanksgiving, because they need that area for parking.
Well, they say after Thanksgiving.
Right, they want it after Thanksgiving, right?
Where I'm at is...
I'm sure it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is to make a motion to give them conditional approval from the town council, pending the approval from the Parks and Recs Department. Those are all reasonable questions that really fall within the Parks and Rec Committee, which can be worked out without it coming back to the council. If the Parks and Recs Committee is satisfied with those answers, I would hate to see it have to come back here for our approval. So, I'm quite happy to make a motion to move it forward, based on those conditions.
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
I agree with Councilwoman Phillips. I think going through the punch list of questions, and getting answers, so the Parks and Rec Committee is satisfied. This project's been pending for two years, and I can understand the frustration of the council members. I just, if you don't mind, I'd like to also ask that we reach out to some insurance carriers just to get some prices on insurance, and it's up to the council whether they want to do it or not, but at least it's an option. You've investigated it, and part of due diligence.
And there's several insurance companies that handle that, that we've used for other things as well. But I would like to take a positive attitude of, let's try to make this happen, rather than delaying it and finding every look and cranny that needs to be worked out beforehand.
Right, just as long as we know who maintains the liability, whether it's... Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, any other discussion?
There's a motion before, but it was never seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a motion?
I'll make a formal motion to accept the proposal, conditional on the review of insurance, and also the approval of the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, when is the next scheduled Parks and Rec Committee?
The 28th. So, really, we could also bring it back to this on the second Monday of November, too, so...
Which is prior to Thanksgiving.
Right. Mr. Bishop, can you... That list of questions that you had from Public Works?
Yep.
Can you have a contact for the people putting together with the Wilcox and Fathers Club?
Yeah, I can. So, what I can do is, if between now and when that next meeting is, I can write up the Public Works questions that they had. I can forward those to the contact people from the Fathers Club. I can forward them to Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay.
And I can ask somebody from Public Works to attend the meeting of that committee, so that they can have their input directly.
So, we have a member of Virgil's here from the Wilcox and Fathers Club, so I don't know if you need any contact information. He's still here, so...
Sure. Okay.
All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Chair votes yes. Passes 8-0. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a five-minute recess, please.
Sure. Do we have a five-minute recess?
Yeah. You're right. What about just cancel our...
All right, we're back from our recess. I want to go back to 5.3.4, 179 West Avenue. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this particular instance, on the motion to table where the vote was for, in favor of the motion, and for against the motion, the mayor doesn't have the ability to break a tie. There's... Under some circumstances, the mayor can break a 5-5 tie, but he has no authority to break a 4-4 tie, under either the Council's procedure or the charter. So, the motion fails.
So, the motion fails, and we'll leave it on the table for now?
Right.
Okay. All right, we're back down to 7.1, Army Engine Plant. Mr. Mayor?
All right, I already gave a report on that in my mayor's comments.
Oh, did I forget something? Oh, I'm sorry. Questions to the town attorney, 5.3.4, I'm sorry. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you. Just to catch up on a couple of things. Last month, I asked about the FOI results training, and you said that it wasn't yet completed. You were waiting for final action. Now, I understand we have final action. What is the next steps with this FOI violation? If you can bring me up to date.
Sure. The law firm that we hired to represent us in that case, at the end of that case, I believe is talking to the commission about the specific parameters of that training. It may be something they do for us, it may be something that the staff for the FOIC does, but that training will occur once they've determined what the parameters of that training are going to be.
Is it going to occur before we leave, or is this going to be something left for the new council?
I don't know. I'm sorry, yeah. I'm really not directly involved in the FOI stuff, so I don't know.
Is it that complicated?
It's... I wouldn't say it's overly complicated. The problem is, there's such an incredible volume of Freedom of Information Act requests, and the information that's being requested. So, it used to be back... It used to be we'd get a little tick up when you come around to an election season, for whatever reason, but it was all something that I could kind of do, and it wasn't all that complicated or involved. In the last eight months or so, maybe, maybe a little longer, there's just been a real increase. For example, just today alone, I think we got three requests. Some of them very complicated. They're not always easy to understand what people are asking for. The information that they're looking for isn't always where they're asking for it to be, and then you have to review that information, depending on what it is, and make sure that it's actually you complied with the request and all of that. It's a lot of work, and as these things build up, it's beyond my ability to do that, and the other things I'm doing for the town, so I had to outsource it.
I think that, okay, that kind of leads me to my second question, my last one. George has been asking to get a status on his FOI update. If I'm saying this correctly, he felt he needed to go to court, or bring his case up for hearing. I'm getting this not fully, but the short of it is, is that he's felt that he's had several FOI requests that have not been responded to, and he hasn't heard anything of it, or justification why they couldn't be fulfilled. Do you know what he's talking about?
Yeah, a little bit. So, I don't look at the Freedom of Information requests any longer, because we hired somebody else to do that. When the volume got to a point where I wasn't able to keep up with it, I just kind of did it, like in my spare time, as sort of a freebie back then, but it became really so much that I couldn't handle it on that basis. So, what we did is, we hired a law firm that represents a number of Connecticut municipalities, big and small, often before the Freedom of Information Commission, and told them, "Look, we want to follow the law. We want to do everything right, and we want to be consistent in our approach to these." So, we're not only internally consistent here in Strafford, but we're consistent with what other municipalities are doing. Whatever it is that they're recommending we do, I'm not going to second guess it, because they're the experts in this area, just like, you know, you go in to see a doctor, you know, you don't substitute your opinion for theirs. So, I know that there are one or two requests that Mr. Mulligan feels that he should receive something he thinks he's entitled to. They're in a disagreement. That's what the Freedom of Information Commission is for. Mr. Mulligan will find it's a very friendly tribunal for him to go to and present his case, and... But other than that, I don't know what he's asking for, because I don't read them. I don't know what we've provided, because I don't get involved in that anymore.
So, if I was to repeat it back, Mr. Mulligan has had a response.
Oh, yes.
And that response was that they did not feel, the town, the representatives of the town, did not feel that the town is obligated to fulfill that request, and as a result, Mr. Mulligan felt that he needed to go to at least a hearing to have his concerns heard by another authority.
I believe that's... It's in the ballpark. I think they may have said for some items that there's a charge associated with getting the information. I think for other items, they may have said that it's not a proper thing to request under Freedom of Information Act. They may have provided them with other information. I'm not sure, but they're... Because you wouldn't... It would be atypical to make a request for, let's say, seven different items, to have the same reason apply to all seven items. Usually, it's different.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Catalano?
I'm good.
Mr. Dempsey? Mr. Poisson?
No, sir.
Mr. Forrester?
Nothing.
Mr. Connor?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Move on to Army Engine Plant, which the mayor answered our questions?
Yes.
Tabled items?
Question to the mayor.
Oh, question, I'm sorry. Boy, I need stronger glasses. Questions to the mayor? Mr. Catalano?
I'm good.
This is... Ms. Phillips? Mr. Dempsey?
None.
Mr. Poisson?
No, sir.
Mr. Forrester?
Nothing.
Mr. Connor?
Nothing.
The chair has nothing.
Thank you.
I figure you've talked too much already, so...
Apparently, I warned you now.
Now, we're tabled items, none. Tabled ordinances and resolutions, 7.3.1, ordinance amending for the fats, oils, and grease pretreatment. I think that's... We're saying that, leaving that on the table. Tabled appointments. Does anybody have anything on the rest of page four, or the top of page five? No. Nothing? Down to ordinances and resolutions, 8.1, the ordinance amending 88-5, EMS Committee. Mr. Forrester?
Motion to refer.
Second that.
Second by Mr. Catalano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass to you, Nancy Lee. 8.2, Article 15, miscellaneous abatements. Make a motion to forward to ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7.70. Ordinance, regular meeting adjournment times. Make a motion to forward to ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
I'd like to add, my name is one of the sponsors. This was one of the ordinances that I wrote.
Okay. And...
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Phillips for doing that, giving consideration towards holidays regarding meetings. It's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also think it's a good idea, because it comes a little confusion if there's a holiday, and do we have a meeting, do we don't have a meeting, so... All right. All in favor of sending this to ordinance? Aye. Aye. All opposed?
Oh, yeah.
Zero. Next is the Port Security Grant Program. Do we have someone here to...
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, we don't even need it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped over an appointment, the housing authority.
No.
No.
Nope.
No, not tonight?
Appointments are in the next section.
Oh, right.
8.5, Resolution Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7.70. Ordinance, regular meeting adjournment times. Make a motion to forward to ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips?
I'd like to add, my name is one of the sponsors. This was one of the ordinances that I wrote.
Okay. And...
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Councilwoman Phillips for doing that, giving consideration towards holidays regarding meetings. It's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also think it's a good idea, because it comes a little confusion if there's a holiday, and do we have a meeting, do we don't have a meeting, so... All right. All in favor of sending this to ordinance? Aye. Aye. All opposed?
Oh, yeah.
Zero. Next is the Port Security Grant Program. Do we have someone here to...
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, we don't even need it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I think we skipped over an appointment, the housing authority.
No.
No.
Nope.
No, not tonight?
No.
Appointment's during the next section.
Oh, right. Eight point five, resolution, assistance to firefighters grant program. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass to Yanis Lee. Zero. And eight point six, the resolution, master municipal agreement for right-of-way projects. Think we need a?
Let's me, yeah.
A little explanation, Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, certainly. So, the state of Connecticut, you may recall, we dealt with a master municipal agreement for construction of transportation improvements. This is a, an add-on to that. It, it really handles a situation where DOT takes, acquires a right-of-way as part of a transportation project. It's a separate agreement. There are different things in it. The bottom line, the thing you need to know is that if you want DOT to do a project that includes them getting a right-of-way, such as the West Broad Street project, and you want them to fund that project, you have to sign this agreement. A number of other municipalities have. This is our first instance where we're dealing with that situation. But if you're going to, if you want DOT to fund the project, you have to agree to their agreement.
I know. Do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. Any discussion? So, Mr. Bishop, this is basically about the West Broad Street project right now, though, right?
Right, but this, this agreement will apply, it's just like the other one, to every other right-of-way project with DOT going forward.
For one year, for?
It goes on infinitely, but really, it's until they change their mind and give us a new agreement. That's really the...
That's the part that I don't like, is that we're automatically giving them the right-of-way. If, if they want to fund, if we want them to fund a project, we have to agree to give them the right-of-way, all right? Or provide a right-of-way?
Yeah, so they'll be paying for a right-of-way usually typically as part of the project. It's usually on a, on a state road or something, the project that they're doing. If they're providing the funding, they're going to want it done pursuant to this agreement. If they want, if we want to provide the funding, we can say to them, no, we'll fund it, we'll do it ourselves, we don't need you.
Is there a scenario that we would have a problem with this?
Yeah, there is. It's, the, what the state is saying, the state's saying, first of all, they won't agree to negotiate, they won't agree to change anything. It's either my way or the highway, if you take the pun. The, so, you could end up in a situation where they take a right-of-way, we want to locate some sort of public improvement like sewers or, or communications or power or anything in there. And the agreement would allow them to tell us, no, put them somewhere else, don't put them in our right-of-way.
Like, for example, remember we wanted to have the dog run up on Route 110? It was an open park area. Representative Poitier worked really hard with the DOT to get that, or at least we thought we had that to be a dog park. And then they turned around and said, no, we couldn't use it. Is that an example?
No, so that's a different example because we wanted them to basically give us the land so that we could have it be town land and put a, a dog park on it. In this instance, what they would be doing is they would be taking a right-of-way, typically to either change the layout of a road.
A road or something.
Exactly. And so, it would be a right-of-way. It wouldn't be us, them giving us the property. It would be their right-of-way, their property, they're paying for it. You know, so. It's, it really does come down to if you want the state to fund the projects in your area, you have to, you have to sign their agreement. Like when you go to a bank for a loan, you know?
And this is a common practice.
It's happening throughout the state. Yeah, the state is doing this with all municipalities, not just Strafford.
All right. Do we have a motion on? I forgot.
Motion and second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Chair votes yes. Votes eight zero. No new business, no appointments, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Dempsey?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dempsey. Thank you.
Let's go Mets.